I know, he was waiting for something from us. So anyway, I'll send that agreement out to everybody. You can look at it. I'll wait till Matt has reviewed it and then we'll send it out to everybody and hopefully get that started so that we can have Bill meeting with the architects. Matt, you look like you want to comment.
Well, the only thing concerning your comment about me getting my email on the subject. And this is a topic that has to be discussed in an open meeting. We can't do it, but to have that discussion privately by email.
Well, okay, but we have discussed it so many times. All we're doing now is really acting on what we've discussed earlier, and it would be getting consensus to ratify later.
If you individually want to see whether there's support among the other eight members.
Call them up, you mean?
Yeah.
Do it that way.
Then we can put it on the agenda in July or during the next meeting. It's what to develop a contract beyond Bill's proposal. I just can't have board members, or board members deliberating basically.
Okay, yeah, it wouldn't be deliberation. It would be yea or nay. Yeah, I do know that much. Okay, all right, we'll work this out somehow, hopefully to try to get action on this sooner rather than later. All right, that's it. I just had that one part for facilities. Mr. Staus, do you have anything to add to the finance report from last week?
Nothing to add, but I just want to thank Rick and the rest of the administrative staff that worked on the budget. I know that's a big lift, so everybody that had a hand in that, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, there's never been, I've never seen a year when so many board members were involved, attended finance committee meetings. I mean, really, there was so much board involvement this year. Rick, you probably noticed that. There were times in the past where we had like the finance chair and one person maybe at those meetings. We had three, four, five, six people sometimes at finance committee meetings, and I commend everybody for that. That's really great. I've always wondered, how can you vote on the budget when you never came to a finance committee meeting to know what's in the budget? Well, this time around, everybody knows a piece of it, so that's really good. Thank you, Rob. So, and Rob will be presenting that budget to us a little bit later. So, board action is requested. I'm moving on to section four, please. Board action is requested to approve the minutes from the May 24th, 2022 legislative meeting.
So moved.
Eric, Mr. Steadley? Second, Dr. Thorpe. Any comment? All right.
I just wanted to note that there's a lighter commentary about the jointure discussion that happened. There's one, and I appreciate that.
All right, good. That's a compliment to you, Rick.
It's a yes for Ashley. I'm in the car, I can't move.
Hi, Ashley.
Hey.
Okay, that motion passed. Let's see, so coming under instructional staff here, Dr. Joe, we have a couple of things. These are all, these are all yours as a new hire?
Mm-hmm. Board action is requested to approve Alyssa Miller for a full-time elementary teaching position at Step 11 with a master's degree, teaching salary of $58,115 and all other terms and conditions of current CBA, effective first teacher day of 2022, 2023. Just some comments that I wanted to, reaching out to her current principal, Rodney Walker. His comments were pretty impressive about her being dedicated, and he mentioned equity. She was a district leader in equity, inclusion, and diversity, of course. She managed a $10,000 grant for students in need to attend field trips to places they would never have an opportunity to attend to.
Wow.
Yeah, it was quite a conversation with him. And one of the very best of implementing culturally relevant practices and the last thing that, well, almost last thing. But I wanted to provide a reference for a wonderful teacher who's made a positive impact on my principalship in the communities that she has taught. So I had a great conversation with Rodney Walker. He said the only problem with Alyssa was she's a Steeler fan. That was the only problem.
He should be forgiven.
Yeah. We can, okay, so we can comment more. Let's have a, so moved, Ed. Can I have a second? Second from Dr. Bosick. All right, so under discussion, I see that she's here.
She is. She's traveling. She's been making her move back to Pennsylvania. She's been teaching in Virginia, 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 I believe? No.
Maryland.
Anarundel, Anarundel County.
So, so any, any comment before we vote? All right, we can congratulate her and welcome her as soon as we vote and make it official. Everybody has the voting window here.
Yes for Ashley.
Motion passed.
So, motion passed. You're officially part of the team. Hi, Alyssa.
Hi.
Where are you?
I'm here. Can you see me?
No, no, I mean, where are you? Are you in Virginia?
No, I'm officially back here in Pennsylvania right now. We just got here like an hour and a half ago.
No kidding? Well, well, welcome, welcome back, welcome back.
Thank you.
So where will she, will she be at Turner?
Well, with the checkerboarding, we're leaning, it could end up being first grade, but that's not 100% sure. We let her know that.
Okay, okay. So you're flexible enough, you can have first grade or wherever you land, you'll be okay.
Yep, I'm excited.
I bet, so are we, so are we.
And you're certified reading specialist too?
Yes.
Oh, are you really? Oh, that's great.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a nice extra certification to bring along. That's super.
Definitely handy.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. So that's awesome.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Welcome aboard. Yep, you're, Dr., you're official. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
I mean, you're welcome to stay, but it's not that interesting. Okay, so FMLA, Dr. Millicent.
Yes. Board action is requested to approve an intermittent FMLA for summer Pedro, director curriculum beginning June 2nd, 2022, ending June 2nd, 2023. And I think she kind of explained last week the situation for Grandma.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All right, Donovan and Bosick, any comment? Kristen? Okay. Everybody?
No, Ashley.
Oh, Ashley, do you want to approve his retirement?
No, no.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, I'm sorry. This is, I'm sorry, it's not a retirement. This is summer Pedro's FMLA.
Yeah, I'm a yes for that.
Okay, thank you. That's okay, no, I'm sorry, I asked you the wrong thing.
Six, six of one.
Okay, so the motion passes. All right, so, and the next item is yours.
Board action is requested to approve retirement Donald Graham, SAP coordinator, effective August 15th, 2022.
So, so moved, Steadley? I'll second. Any comment, question? Okay. Just while we're waiting to vote, he's retired to go do something fun, isn't he?
I'm not sure what, no, he doesn't have plans yet. I already asked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he.
I thought he was going west to like.
Oh, that was Mr. Bush.
Oh, all right, okay, okay.
Working in Yellowstone.
Yeah, right.
So now, Mr. Graham, like he also was our truancy officer for intermediate school too, for approximately 19 years. So I got to work closely with Mr. Graham when I was the principal at Turner. So, he'll be missed. So we had a little celebration for him last day of school, so.
Ashley.
So, Ashley, you want to approve? Okay, great. Okay, I don't mean to bug you, but.
No, you're fine. You're not bugging me at all. I'm trying to push a button.
All right. If it's harder, if it's hard for you to push the button online, I'll just ask you each time. That's easier for you. I know you're in the car.
All right, I mean, I'm, I'm almost there. I'm gonna be there before the meeting's over, but yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, cool. Okay, so board and committee reports. Number one, Joint Tax Committee. There was a meeting last night.
Non-instructional staff.
So, non-instructional staff, I'm sorry. Why do I skip over that all the time?
Board action is requested to approve the resignation of LaShawn the Ramsey, a parent professional at Kelly Primary, effective June 1st, 2022.
So moved, Ed. Any questions? Okay, thanks, Ashley.
Board action is requested to approve Shamena Yates as a floating security guard at an hourly rate of $20, $20 an hour and all other terms and conditions attached, effective August 25th, 2022.
So moved, Ed. Any questions or comments on this? So, do we know if she's here?
I don't know if Shamena's on or not.
I assume these candidates all passed the mandatory screening in Pennsylvania State.
Yes.
And, and what kind of orientation to the district? Do you mind describing that? Or who, who will she sort of work with or be mentored by?
First time, first she'll come in and meet with Cindy and myself, of course, but then I'll introduce her to those security guards and what her role will be there as, as the floating security guard. So those two together will be mentoring her along the way.
Okay, so since she starts, August 25th must be really close to the beginning of school, right?
Yes.
So, so would everybody be okay if it occurs a little bit of extra money? I mean, if we need to bring in Mr. Smith and, and the Turner guard, I mean, for an orientation or something like that, a little bit in advance, that would be great.
Okay.
I mean, you know, just so she doesn't start cold on that day.
She'll be traveling between both schools. So definitely if one of them are out, she'll be filling in. And then one of the buildings, if they're both there, she could be monitoring the cameras while the other person is moving around the building, checking doors.
Or if there's an event at one school, I mean, we'd feel better with two people there, so. Okay, that's great. Okay, that motion passed. Thanks, everybody.
Yes for Ashley.
And Ms. Yates, if you're here, just say hi. All right, and we have a resignation, Dr. Joe.
I think it's Rick, you want that one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick.
That's all right. Board action is requested to approve the resignation of Curtis Jefferson, a nighttime custodian at Turner Primary, should be Turner Intermediate, sorry, effective July 1st, 2022.
So moved, Ed. Any discussion here? Curtis was a really good guy. I got to meet him, and, but Amazon was more attractive to him for now, so. He might be delivering a package on your very doorstep sometime soon. Okay, that's it, for non-instructional staff, right?
Just to wait for two votes.
Oh.
Rob and Ashley.
Yes.
Hey, Rob. Yeah, okay, we're good.
All right, now, section eight, board committee reports. The Joint Tax Committee did finally meet last night. There were no applications actually to approve, but the borough representatives wanted to go ahead and meet anyway. I could not be there because of the community meeting at Hosanna House. Rob could not be there because, because his, his time on the board is expiring. So Rick, our third member, did attend and told me that in my absence, they elected me to be vice chair of the Joint Tax Committee, which I'll, I'll fix them for that the next time we meet. And there were a couple of other documents and things that were up for, anything, anything, nothing real significant, right, Rick?
No, nothing. So there was only two, two other members there in person and Kate Luchtenberg, presented some things on county assessments.
Okay. So, so, okay, everybody, so, you know, our resolution when we joined the Joint Tax Committee states that our representatives will be the president or his or their designate, the finance chair or their designate, and the business manager, I think, or their designate. So, so I had that all wrong. We just, I just tried to straighten it out, and then we're losing people. So I don't know how to move ahead with this. I'm probably gonna, while I talk to you all and see if anybody's gonna volunteer to be the new finance chair, I, I'll step in and do that for the month of July. Rick's dreading that, but, but I'll step in and do it for the month of July. But so, a couple of things. If anybody's interested in becoming the new finance chair, please let me know. That would also get you on the Joint Tax Committee. We do have to have three people, you know, on that committee. It's important that we do. So, and I'm gonna recommend to them that that committee only meets every other month. I don't think we need to have a meeting on the books for every month. But so if you're interested in the finance, finance chair position, please let me know about that. That would, that would be great to get resolved.
Ed, can I say something about that?
Yes, absolutely.
Just so we're all clear too, which was made clear to me last night. In the bylaws, like apparently it states that, you know, we have to have two elected officials from the district attend those meetings. Because neither one were there last night, I became the elected official, so I had to actually vote in your behalf.
You voted for me to become the vice chair?
Why, I have a choice.
All right, we'll, we'll deal with this later.
But anyhow, yeah, so it would have passed anyhow, but so I became the voting.
Okay.
So just so people know, if they go and there's not a board member there, they are now voting.
I see, I get it.
I didn't know if that was, that doesn't sound right to me.
That doesn't sound right to me.
That doesn't sound right to me, but that was, um.
All we did was elect her as vice chair. I don't think that's too problematic.
This is, well, they elected the chair as well, but same thing. It was Mrs. Richardson that stated that to me, because I tried to say, I'm not a voting member. She said, you have to vote.
I don't think that's, we'd have to go through, I mean, it's not that consequential. All they did was put me in a position that I don't really want, but, but we'll have to, but we'll have to look at that, because I don't think that's right about the voting.
No. In the future, I should know.
Okay, and I don't know why all three members from the school district wouldn't be voting members. Why would you be there if you can't vote? I mean, you know what I mean? You're not an elected board member, but you're on the, how could, why would you be there if you can't vote?
Same with John. He's not allowed to vote.
But he's not a member of that.
John Antolino?
Yeah, he's not, he attends as the borough manager, but.
And I attend as the borough, the school business manager.
Yeah, but you're one of our three. What I mean?
Yeah, we can look at.
So, yeah, we'll have to look at that, look at that. I believe you have voting rights.
That's fine.
So that's what we would have to look at. So, okay, thank you.
I'll just add, Ed, let's talk about how.
Finance, yeah. All right, we could even co-do it, I mean, to share the lift or something like that, if anybody's interested in that.
I know we need, we need someone to step up. I'm going first.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So that's great. I'm sorry. Forbes Road, Michael, are you? I don't think Michael's here. I know that there was a meeting, and he, he told me that he was able to attend it, but he, I don't think he's here tonight, so we'll, we'll pass on his report. Eastern area, Eric, I know you sent something out to us related to eastern area, but it's, the floor's yours.
Okay, so the Eastern Area School Board voted to approve a three-year extension of the jointure agreement. This happened at a prior meeting. A number of boards around, around the region must now vote on that, including off. The agreement appears delayed and somehow it didn't, it didn't make its way to the agenda. I don't see it on the agenda right now, but the agreement, Matt has taken a look at this agreement and reviewed it. You know, basically what it does is, the prior agreement, its length was five years in, in its term. The current agreement, not everyone felt like they wanted to renew the agreement for five years. At the request or the suggestion of the solicitor, we amended the agreement to make it two years. That made it more palatable for many of the districts to go ahead and commit to that. My understanding is that there will be two districts and likely a third that will not approve the jointure agreement. I do think that we need to have a longer discussion with council, with solicitors in the other districts about what that means if they do not approve the agreement. I believe that a majority is necessary to make the agreement sticky, to make it legally binding. I do think that it's likely that the other districts will probably have to at least deal with the ongoing problem of what to do with the real estate interest that they own after they leave the jointure. That is one of the points that Matt brought up. Separately, you know, it's not clear how districts should leave the jointure, how they would do that, what type of process that they would follow. It's also not clear how other districts might enter the jointure and be allowed to participate like we do. I think, you know, my goal with trying to extend the agreement by two years was to allow for Tom to negotiate those things and to put those into some sort of form, like a bylaw or some type of policy that the EAS board has and that we, we then ratified. If we were able to do that, then we would be able to find a way for districts to come into and exit from the jointure agreement, which I think is the big problem. Everybody seems to want to get out of this jointure agreement as soon as they learn that they, they're part of it. Longer term, you know, there's a very good reason for us to continue and participate in the jointure. The jointure does provide us with an economic advantage because we participate as a district. We get a voting advantage to kind of influence how the budget is spent, what things are, are acted upon, and also, you know, what, what, the direction of the school generally. Speaking with the AIU, the AIU provides the educational services. They run the entire program. They, they hire all the staff. They hire the principal and maintain their position there. They hire a custodian to take care of the building. We should, as the building owners, as partial building owners, we should be maintaining some other things there. We have some costs associated with that. However, overall, our students enjoy a significant discount of the tuition involved in attending that school. We do not have to pay for any of the maintenance fees on the building because we're part of the jointure. Any district that has students at the facility that does not participate in the jointure pays an extra fee of $3,500 per year per student. That goes to the building maintenance fees. It's very likely that that cost will increase over time because of the difficulties with the building. The building needs a significant amount of work, and it's likely that that cost will increase over time. We, we actually tried, the board proposed an increase in that cost by $1,000 per student per year. That mess, that, that vote failed because it did not have the proper quorum. It's very likely that if the other schools exit the jointure and do not participate next time, that it's likely that that initiative will pass next time. So likely, we're looking at a $1,000 per student increase. Last I checked, we had five students at the school. I think that's still true. It looks like factor there, you're confirming that. And so our cost is likely to increase by about $5,000, which, you know, is modest in the, in the scheme of things. And I think we, we certainly have that type of budget available. So, in any case, my recommendation is that we approve the jointure agreement. We continue to participate in the jointure. It gives us an advantage in the cost of our students, and it's also an excellent facility as far as, you know, being able to teach them the skills that they need. So that's my recommendation. I don't know what we need to do about the jointure agreement. We may have to call a special session to approve that.
It's on the agenda.
It, it is on the agenda?
Under L, under board governance.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at the agenda, and we're under A, C, I think. And I'm, and so under L, we will approve the agreement. We will take a vote on the agreement. Hopefully, we can approve it. And if there's any questions, I'll take those at this time. If you have any ideas or thoughts about this.
Eric, why are people opting out of it? Just out of curiosity, you know, I mean, it seems to, I mean, I was there with you, and Dr. Joe was a fabulous facility, but where are they gonna send these kids? I mean, why, why are they opting out?
That's a good question, and I think there's, there's, there's two sides to that discussion. So number one, I think, I think it's largely, most of the cost of participating in the, in the jointure is assessed by the real estate assessments of the district that you're in, and it's proportional to those real estate assessments. We Hill in Werkinsburg, we have a relatively low assessment at what sounds like a huge number, but it's around $400 million or so, might have the actual number. But if you compare that to the assessed value of real estate in, say, Gateways or Monroeville's, where all the huge buildings and businesses are, you know, it's, it's a huge value. It's over a billion dollars there. So they pay as a much higher percentage of the overall costs of maintaining this building. That's the entry fee that we pay to get into this jointure. Each district pays a proportion based on that whole. We add up all those proportions, then we take your proportion as a district and divide it into that, and then that's your percentage. So the other districts are really looking at, you know, relatively high costs, hundreds of thousands of dollars to participate in this yearly. Our cost is in the tens of, or maybe, you know, low 100ths of thousands of dollars to participate. So we get a, you know, pretty significant advantage. They don't like the idea of paying that much to maintain this building. That's the primary reason they want to exit. I'll also say that there is generally, the AIU encourages and the districts are aware of it. That, you know, in, in, in general, the AIU wants districts to be able to take care of its special education students. And it's okay for the students to go into this program, learn what they need to learn, and then return back to the school, as long as the school has the facilities and the ability to handle those students. So generally, there should be a flow back to the districts. And I think a number of districts are at the point where they realize they probably can take a number of their students back. If this Sunrise School closes and it's not available to them, they have the facility there to take care of those students. So they don't see it as a net, as much of a benefit as, say, we do. In our district, we don't have necessarily all of the facilities to take care of those special education students. You know, we can take care of most of our students. I think we take care of about 25 or so. But, you know, with the, the students with the profound difficulties are much better suited for that school, for them, so. So I'd say it's two reasons primarily. I mean, it's, it's, it's cost for the districts and what they feel is the value that they're getting out of it, and, and the desire to bring their students back to their own district. So I think that's primarily driving it. You know, I'll also comment, because it's, you know, there might be other districts out there that have an interest in getting into this because they have a lot of students there. I've looked at the numbers, and it looks like Woodland Hills is one that participates, and they have a lot of students there. They're the highest number. New Kensington does not participate. They have a higher number of students than even Woodland Hills does. And it might make sense for them financially to join the jointure agreement, reduce the amount of cost that they pay. It might be a net benefit for them. And so I think that's one of the reasons that I, I'd like to go and work on, trying to figure out how to get the bylaws changed so that, you know, some districts didn't have the advantage and could use the ability to do so. They, they can get into this. The districts that want to get out, they can get out. And we just need to define the terms on what's going to happen. I think that's the right thing to do, so.
So, so are you saying that under the current bylaws, New Ken can't join?
There's no way.
There's no way to join?
There's no way to reform the jointure. And, you know, we, we've asked council to explain how that might happen. They have not been able to find a way to do that yet. Or at least they haven't found a way to articulate that to us.
I mean, that, um, that ought to be doable somehow, shouldn't it, Matt? I mean, it seems crazy to exclude new people from coming in, but.
Yeah, I mean, you have to understand, the school exists by virtue of an agreement of the parties. So bringing a new member in is amending that agreement that would require the consent of all members of that agreement. So I've not studied, you know, jointure agreement beyond this issue of determination that's facing us. So, I mean, I'd have to defer to the Eastern Area Solicitor, but I, I've gotta believe that, you know, it can be defined.
Yeah, it seems like, it'd be crazy to not want to amend that agreement.
I agree with you.
If it's the original one from 1964, it ought to be looked at anyway.
I think part of the problem here is that our council may not be sufficiently skilled in order to be able to give us good advice about, this agreement was built, as you say, in 1974, and then it's been renewed continuously since that day. It's been renewed in five-year increments, and I don't think anybody has ever really questioned, you know, how this agreement should be changed or, or, you know, what, why it should be changed in the first place. I only think it's, it's now that the, the costs of maintaining the school have gone so high that I think people are looking to get out of this agreement, because they just, they, they don't really feel like they can afford those costs.
Okay. I mean, can't, if there's anything I can do, I don't think there would be, but I think your idea about trying to find a way to amend, amend it so that new districts could join is only. about trying to find a way to amend it so that new districts could join is only common sense, so.
I think that is one of the primary things I'd like to try to achieve. You know, since there's impetus to try to exit the agreement, I think we might have to define that first. And then, but I think it's useful to use that as leverage to try to define the other part of the process because I'm afraid that the jointure will dissolve completely if enough schools leave. And I think there is that risk right now.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor this, but, so right now, there's no mechanism in the agreement for somebody to opt out.
Exactly.
So, okay. You know, just to throw out a similar maybe kind of thing, Forbes Road, we were an original partner in that, you know, and, but that board won't let us out. You know, I mean, we've been a member there, we've had to maintain our membership there. We don't send students, but we've had to maintain our membership in that consortium for what, eight years now, I guess, you know, since, and we have to pay our stipend every year. We don't pay any tuition, but we have to pay our stipend every year. They won't let us out. All they do is every couple of years, they vote to allow us to, to allow us to send our CTE kids to PPS instead. All right? They have to grant permission for us to send them outside of Forbes Road. So I'm just saying, if Forbes Road won't let us out, maybe Eastern Area shouldn't be too flexible about letting anybody else out.
Here's my question. Who is the solicitor for Forbes Road?
Do you know who's it? I should, I know that name. I'll get it for you.
It's fine. Maybe you would be helpful to have that.
Bruce Dice.
Yes.
Gateway.
Bruce Dice.
Bruce Dice.
Yes, Bruce Dice.
Yeah, yeah, right, yes. His name is Bruce Dice.
D-I-C-E.
I mean, so, I'm just giving, throwing out an example. They're both jointures that were created for similar kinds of reasons, probably very different bylaws when they were formed, but it's not like the Eastern Area Board has to let anybody leave because, as an example, Forbes Road won't allow us to formally leave either.
Oh, and I want to get two deep points.
Okay.
Votech Schools, there's provision, school code, that implicated the necessity of what Forbes Road does with us. There's no such school code provision relative to Eastern Area.
Well, you always ruin my apples to apples. Forget it, Eric. We need a new solicitor. All right, thank you. But it might be worth it to talk to Dice anyway, but, all right.
It might be.
All right, okay. Sorry about all of this. Let's see, where are we? I'm sorry, the treasurer's report. I lost my, I lost the agenda, so.
Board action is requested to ratify and confirm the June 2022 general fund payments in the amount of $1,547,313.64. And wire transfers in the amount of $1,371,406.77. Following reports as of May 31st, 2022 will be made matter of record in minutes. One statement of revenue and expenditures, two balance sheet, and three bank account summary cash.
So moved, Ed.
Second one.
Any discussion? I just want to make a comment, like when people do, well, like Eric said, you know, he could probably help lift with the finance committee. This isn't casting aspersions on anybody. I just want to say, Command Danny, I've been in his house when his entire dining room table, which is large, is covered with bills and papers and things from the school district that came out of a giant box. It's like, it's a lot to do that job. So thank you, Dennis, a lot.
You're welcome.
I mean, I'm sure everybody thanks you because somebody has to do that job and you do it well.
Rick, can you vote for me? I mean, yes.
All right, that motion passed. Okay, so finance, the anticipation note, Rick.
Board action is requested to approve the tax anticipation note for Forbes Road Career Technical Center per attached.
So moved, Ed.
Second.
So we have any discussion on that?
All right. I gotta be honest, I didn't get a chance to read this. Is there anything in here that we need to worry about? No, anybody know? No, there's not. It's just our part allowing them to borrow money to start their year off.
Lots of school districts have to do that. We don't anymore, but we used to. It's just, it's like a short-term loan, like a bridge loan to get your school year started until the tax money starts flowing in.
Monica and Ashley.
Monica and Ashley.
Yes, for me too.
Okay.
All right, I got it, Eric.
Okay, so, okay, that motion passes. So the item B is approving the new, the budget for 2223 and...
They're switched, it's tax rate and it's you first. Look at the agenda.
Okay, I'm looking at an old copy of the agenda, I'm sorry. All right, okay. I don't know how we continue to do, so we're on number C. I don't know how we continue to do this to be able to reduce the milage rate. It's just, when I first came on the board, I thought it would be impossible to ever lower our taxes. This is the fourth time we've been able to do it. So congratulations to us and to administration, you know, and probably that long period of time when Dr. Iverson was here, Rick here, to be able to make our district so efficient that we can do this four times. And I think last week when we met, Rob calculated that it's about a 15, between 15 and 20% cumulative reductions since the first time we did it. That's huge. Every dis, no district in the state is able to do that. So I think we can pat ourselves on the back about being able to lower that milage rate. So board action is requested to approve the local tax rates for 2223 as follows. The real estate tax, 24.5 mils, that is $24.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. This equates to a two-mil reduction from the 2122 fiscal year. Act 511 Earn Income Tax, that's the EIT, is 50%. The real estate, is that 50%?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My glasses are all dirty. The real estate transfer tax is .05%, is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the Act 511 Local Service Tax, EST, is $5 a year.
Correct.
All right, I got that one right. Thank you, everybody. All right, that's all. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Second, Dr. Rossing. Any discussion on this? I would just like, I would just throw out there that I think we can all feel really good that we're able to do this. As you talk to people in the community and people want to pat you on the back a little bit, remember to tell people that there's an end to this at some point. I mean, don't get used to us being able to reduce the rate every year because, in my calculation, this might be the last time we're able to do it. People should be glad that we're trying hard, but this is not something we can keep doing, reducing our revenue. But I just, I say that to my neighbors just so they get real about it, not to expect us to do this every year. Okay, I'll vote.
Yes. I was trying to get there in person for this one, but I'll see you all in like two minutes.
And we got Monica's?
Everybody voted yes.
Okay, good. So that's unanimous. Great, thanks, everybody. All right, so now, I'll go in the right order. So with very little arm twisting, Rob Strauss stepped in this year and volunteered to be the finance chair and did, I think, a yeoman's job at that, that work plus building, the biggest part of that, I don't know if it's the biggest part, a big part of it is building the budget for the, for the new year coming up. And so I asked Rob if he would read the resolution to approve the new budget.
All right. Yeah, and just want to make sure, you know, we stayed out front is that, yes, we are seeing an increase in the state budget coming to us, but we also were able to increase funding for students, administrators, faculty, and making sure we're meeting all the needs across the board for the district with this budget. And then we were able to do the tax break on top. So it really is, it's great to see it all come together and, you know, part of this is supporting Kelly renovations. We're going to continue to grow the fund balance. And what this budget does is it allows us to do everything and anything that, you know, as a part of the school district that you'd want to see. So board action is requested to approve the Wilkinsburg School District final budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023 with a milage rate of 24.5 per $1,000. And file attached PDE 2028 forms with the Department of Education as required by state law. The 2022-2023 total revenues are $36,918,402. Total expenditures are $36,918,402. Revenue includes using $5,400,000 of ARP funds. Budget is created with $4,551,058 of fund balance contingency to pay professional salaries.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? When I got here, our budget was about $27 million a year. Know what I mean? So look at the growth, it's pretty remarkable. Monica and Ashley, do you want to have a new budget?
I do, yes.
All right, thank you very much. That's unanimous, I guess. Okay, that motion passes unanimously, and that wraps up Section 11 Finance. Policy 246, Dr. Mosnick.
Board action is requested to approve the second and final reading of Policy 246, the wellness, school wellness.
So moved, Ed.
Second, Ed.
Oh, any discussion on this one? Okay.
Do we have a phys ed instructor at the district?
Two, one in each building. They're part of the...
One in each school?
One in each school.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah, they're good, by the way, too. I mean, not that they're not all good.
Yes, for Ashley.
Motion passed.
All right, that motion passed. Let's see, moving into Board Governance, and then I have a couple like sort of announcement things to throw in here at some point, but they're not on the agenda. Board action is requested to approve participation by up to five school directors to attend the 2022 PSBA conference at Pocono Manor, Pennsylvania, at an estimated cost of $1,375 per person. That's a $425 registration fee, about $600 for lodging, and about $300 for incidentals like travel and stuff like that, for a total estimated cost of $6,875 to be paid from the general fund. There's a line in there for board expense. So this is budgeted for all incidental expenses must adhere to the district's travel policy. That means no booze, among other things, but, so that's that.
So moved.
The people who move and motion, and second this motion automatically get to go to the conference if they, if they want to. So I just thought, throw that out.
Yes, I'm literally getting out the car.
Oh, come on in. We'll hear the doorbell. Okay, that motion passed. Thanks, everybody. If it seems like sending five people, we didn't usually have sent, maybe we sent two or three people, but there's a pent-up need for professional development on the board. That's why I asked for five. Field random, Dr. Mosnick.
Board action is requested to approve the Wilkinsburg Cheerleaders to Rent and Use the Turner Field Per District Policy.
So moved, Ed.
Second one.
Any discussion?
Do we have an instructor for the cheerleaders? Who's leading the effort here?
That's all, that's all through that, their organization. So once you get into school districts, once you get to a certain grade, like, it's usually outside of organization, so we don't have an involvement in that.
Okay, they're not cheerleaders for...
It's the Wilkinsburg Athletic Association, so it's the Little League organization specifically representing Wilkinsburg. There are Wilkinsburg residents that play, but surrounding communities, depending on what the current status is with their own community sports, could change that, but this is the Wilkinsburg Athletic Association.
Thanks, Ash.
If there's any way we can get just a responsible person to identify as, you know, point of contact.
Oh, their name's probably on the application.
Yes.
It's, yeah, it's Trevor Williams. Is that, is that person, Eric? Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, and I finally don't have to take calls from Trevor anymore because, because we got this all settled through the administration running it now. Let's see, so, so where are we? I didn't see.
Wait, wait, Juanita and Ashley.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Yes, for Ashley.
All right, that motion passed. Rick, insurance.
Board action is requested to approve the district liability insurance rate for the 2223 this year at a total cost of $167,800 per attached breakdown.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have a copy of the policy on, on somewhere?
We will be getting that after the board approves them. Yep, I'll put it out there.
Just... So once the baby gets...
Dennis, Juanita, and Ashley.
I love it, yes.
Okay. Look at him. Look at all that hair. I'm sorry, we're all oogling over a baby here. That motion passed. All right, item D, extension of monthly stipends. You recall that we did this to piece together human resource function in the district while we decide what we want to do about a human resource officer. So, Rick?
Board action is requested to approve additional monthly stipends for Paul Paradise of $700, Summer Pendrow $450, and Cynthia Bogutay of $450 for additional duties related to human resources effective January 2022 through September of 2022. Total expenses not to exceed $1,350 to be paid from general fund. Stipends have already been paid for this, for this work through June 30th of 2022.
Oh, so moved, Ed.
Second, Ashley.
Discussion, questions?
I want to make a comment about this. I, I've been coming increasingly uncomfortable with the idea of sharing the human resources function inside the school amongst three people. I'd really like to move towards hiring a permanent HR person for a number of reasons, but, you know, I'd really like for people that currently do their jobs, to kind of focus on their job, not have this extra burden on them. And I think, you know, having an HR person in-house would take a lot of load off of, I'm sure that you're dealing with a lot of these things, interviewing and such. So I'd like to propose that we move toward that. As far as approving these, I think this makes sense. I mean, we've already paid this cost, so I think that makes sense to me.
So I couldn't agree with you more. So I think we got in the weeds a little bit about what kind of qualifications we wanted such a person to have. So how about if we circulate the existing HR director job description that we have and everybody have a chance to look at that so that we can, you know, make sure that that describes the kind of person that we need? All right? So that if we want to make modifications to that job description or the qualifications of such a person, if we can make those, then get that job advertised. All right? Pardon me?
Send that to the board.
Yeah, do you mind?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's great. So did we...
We're ready for Ashley and Eric.
Yes. I'm logging in.
Okay, Netflix is me.
All right, that motion passes. Netflix, Rick?
Board action is requested to approve an agreement with Netflix for the use of the Wilkinsburg High School for 15 days in August, at a rental rate of $7,500 plus an additional $2,500 for cleanup. Also reimbursement for all utilities during the 15 days will be paid by Netflix on a prorated basis, paid for from, I shouldn't have to say paid for from general fund. Sorry.
So moved, Ed.
Second.
Any discussions?
I think the extra cost for cleanup covers our concerns. I think that's what we had last time, kind of makes it easy for us to clean up after them. Great idea.
They are looking for extras. Monica. Monica.
Can you vote yes, I was waiting for the pop-up, I didn't get it, sorry.
Motion passed.
All right, that motion passed. Item F, conference request, Dr. Milosnik.
Board actions requested to approve Lonzo Boyce to attend the Pazzro Conference from July eighteenth to twentieth at a cost not to exceed seven hundred dollars paid for through the general fund.
So moved, Ed.
Second.
So that's the Pennsylvania Association of School Resource Officers, by the way.
Yeah, and he'll bring back information for Officer Smith as well.
Okay, is that a local, I mean, how can it be only seven hundred dollars?
No, it's not local, it's in Harrisburg. But, yeah. His travel?
We'll have to look at it, we don't, let's take a look at this, we don't want him paying out of pocket.
There's a chain, and we can add that to the next month.
Or you could just increase to seven hundred now, just to be safe, not to exceed.
Okay, so could I, yeah, so could I suggest a change to this, everybody, I don't want, we don't want Lonzo paying out of pocket to do this, so just in case, just in case, can we amend this, please? Can we agree to amend it to say at a cost not to exceed, what, a thousand dollars? Maybe, I mean, that, we're.
Let's do fifteen hundred.
Okay, that, okay, one thousand five hundred dollars paid for from general fund, is everybody okay with that? Yeah, I mean, is, anybody not okay with it? Let's put it that way. Okay, great, thank you, everybody, it just seemed like that wasn't enough.
It does seem.
Yeah, right, that might just be the registration fee, but it's eighteen, nineteen, twenty-three days in Harrisburg, I mean, what's he gonna eat? So, okay.
Are we amending it in the, in the?
amended in the minutes, is that okay, Matt?
Yeah, we're voting on the amended version that I read, please. If you've already voted on the original one and you want to change your vote, that's okay, you can just say so. Okay. Item G, oh, I'm sorry, okay, that passed, item G.
Board actions request to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three contract extension of Preston Ridge at an annual cost of one hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars or eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars fifty cents per month. This is an increase of ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars over the twenty-one, twenty-two school year contract.
Any discussion? So they came down a bit on that increase, didn't they, it was about a twenty thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, they came down about ten thousand dollars and then made the edits that Matt recommended. I think that was the one that he recommended.
I got to meet both of the instructors to that program at the Turner Promotion Day, and they they're so happy to be here, and they really want to expand the services they're providing for next year, to some community community outreach, mentorship, different things like that, that are really, would be important for those kids.
I just wanted to make a comment about this, and I had looked at this before, and I talked with Ed Matt Joe, you guys know about this. Just for the benefit of the rest of the board, the Wilkinsburg Education Association and the Wilkinsburg Educational and Support Professional Association, they they are able to provide a similar service to what these folks provide. In years past, we've had a memorandum of understanding that has been circulated to both the unions, so that they understand that we're contracting out for these services, they're okay with that. We believe that that memorandum covers this, this new contract at this point, because the memorandum is not dated, it doesn't have a specific date on it, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the fact that the W E A does have some some input on whether we, whether we do this or not, because of their, you know, their special status and it's quite a part of the agreement, so.
Thank you for that. Expansion. Okay, that motion passes. A field trip, Dr. Milosnik.
Yes, board actions request to approve, oh, no, wait, I'm sorry. Board actions request to approve a pre-K through six field trip to Heinz Field on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, at a cost not to exceed one thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars for admission and transportation paid for from the asset funds.
So moved, Ed. So what is it, so how can we send that many kids? I mean, this is not for all of them.
Yeah, it's for summer enrichment kids.
Oh, for those, for the summer enrichment kids, okay, fine. I was thinking, how can we send the whole district too? Okay, for thirteen hundred bucks, all right.
Motion passed.
That motion passed. Teach Plus.
Board actions requested to approve Teach Plus per, per the attached documents. There's no cost to the district.
Any discussion? Questions? Okay.
I think Ohio P A, don't get me wrong, they just, I know they hired a guy from our consortium. And so I think it's just, right now, what I heard is a few schools, they selected a few schools to contact to see if they were interested, so we're in one of those few schools, but I think it's less than ten schools. It does say in the back, sixty-eight, sixty-eight schools.
Motion passed.
Okay, that motion passed. Let's see, waterfront learning.
Board action requests to approve the waterfront learning contract extension for the twenty-two, twenty-three at a cost of one thousand dollars for site license, five hundred dollars for half-day of training, and per student cost of seven hundred thirty dollars each, not to exceed fifty-one thousand one hundred and ten dollars for approximately seventy students, now, we estimated high on that this year, I think we're rated around fifty, but we just estimate it high, in case we don't, we don't know what the falls were in the period, so.
Oh, so moved. Sorry. Any other, any discussion or questions on this one? This is, provides a lot of the materials and support for the, for the online program.
The online program, the virtual academy.
All right, that motion passed, thank you, everyone. Item K.
Board actions requested to approve the C P I crisis training at a cost of three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars per person, we'll have, I believe, two people attend, but then they'll be certified to teach our staff. And we have to do this every year.
So moved, Ed, oh, I'm sorry, I'll second. So Ashley and then Ed.
You said that we're sending two, two people?
Yeah, and everybody doesn't have C P I, it's our restraint training for, okay, just want to make that clear, it's through the Crisis Prevention Institute, and it's consistent with what Preston Ridge has done, so we're all doing the same, same thing in-house, so.
That motion passed. All right, finally, one more, Eastern Area School. Do you want this one, Eric? You've been working with it. Or you want me to take it? Eric, do you want to read this one, since you're our guy there?
Sure, I'm sorry, I was, like, realized we came up here. Board action is requested to approve the resolution between Eastern Area Schools and the Wilkinsburg School District to extend the joint term for an additional two years as presented, see attached document. School years through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
That's so calmly, you know, slowly, calm reading instead of racing through it the way I do. So moved, Ed. Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, I'll add that in a minute, and I'll fix that one where it says years.
Okay, 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 so is that on there? Okay, okay, I'm hitting refresh, I'm sorry, no wonder I was confused about this stuff, I was looking at the old version of the agenda. Okay, I know what's left, and I.
Ashley, or you, yes.
I know what's left here, and I hate to, with, with great regret, I will ask the board to approve the resignation of Rob Strauss from the board, and also, you know, of course, as finance chair. So, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I know we don't want to, but we have to vote on it, okay, right? Is there a second?
What if we all vote no, does he have to stand?
We could ask Rob if he's changed his mind at this point.
I did, I did yesterday.
Have you changed your mind at all?
Ah, sorry, I just voted yes. No, it's been a pleasure, though, you guys are great.
No, thank you for everything, Rob, I mean, it's really, yeah. I know you probably, you wouldn't have gotten roped into this if Jerome hadn't been on a walk on some fateful day and met you about this, but, but thanks a lot for your service.
I appreciate you.
Pass five, one, one.
Five, one, one, really? We had a no and an abstention, so that barely squeaked through. So, all right, before we adjourn, I have, like, I'm sorry, quickly, just some announcements here, because there were questions about it. So number one, the Wilkinsburg Community Meetings, there have been two of them so far, to invite the community to talk about, to hear about the, from the W C D C about plans for marketing the high school building. And that's part of our agreement with them, that they would do this, provide a professional facilitator and so on. I was at the first one, and Michael was there, and Ashley was there, and Monica was there. And for the second one yesterday, Joe was there, for the second one yesterday, I think only I and Michael could make it. Interesting to hear, very light attendance, you know, I mean, people just don't come out for these things. Very interesting, though, to hear people's ideas, one of the activities was asking people to vision as a result of the work being done with the high school, da-da-da-da, what would they see? And things that come up really often would be, people would like to see definitely some way for the building to continue to support the arts. People would like to see, last night, there was a lot of emphasis on to see the building continue to be used for educational purposes, whether it's V O T E C or different kinds of preparing people for the future, not just Wilkinsburg, all over, maybe a regional hub for adult post-secondary education, there were some really good ideas that came out of it. It's, and then, you know, the downside is, it's our job to kind of temper that a little bit with the fact that, you know, we can't control the proposals that'll come in, you know, based on that R F P, and it's our responsibility to the community as the school board to pick the one that's best. So, but I think people leave there reassured that we'll make the decision that is best, best for the community. So, and if anybody, there aren't any more of them, but if you want to I can ask the C D C to sort of make sure that they notify us, and then I can share that about any other activities coming up, but that was the last of the community meetings. I would say altogether, there were fewer than fifty residents who, who attended those. We will have to commence the search for a new member, so we have talked about how to go about that. Does that need to be an executive session? It cannot be? Okay, okay, so, what, I'll just ask the question, what do we want to do about that? Matt has told us in the past, it's, it's legal, it's acceptable to go back to the pool of people we originally had, but there's only one person left in that pool, you know? Tony, all right, so we can, without searching or interviewing or doing any of that stuff, we can choose Tony for the F T C, or we can advertise again and see the new people that we get, the way we did the first time around. So can I get a consensus from people about which way you'd like to go? So one suggestion would be, well, that means we're offering it to, that means, so Ashley's suggesting that maybe we should just offer it to Tony. We need, I need to hear from people about.
I'll offer my opinion, I'm aware that a candidate has already submitted a, you know, request to be considered for the position. I think it should be fair to her, you know, and don't get me wrong, I would vote for Tony right now. But I think to be fair for that person, I think we might need to go through the process again. I think we should go ahead and advertise it, you know, do, do the right thing, because we have some interest outside of, of the current pool, so.
Okay.
Well, since this just happened, how are we supposed to know someone already applied?
We just got a letter, I sent it out to everybody, we just, Rick just received an email, yeah, and it was an application from somebody.
You mentioned it earlier, I didn't know we already had someone.
Yeah, the person heard about it somehow, and thanks, I forgot all about that, thank you, that's an important factor. So, yeah, right, so, so.
So technically, though, when they opened up, how did that first?
No, I think probably somebody on the board mentioned it to somebody, my guests, I mean, they heard about it somehow. They heard. Correct, we didn't advertise.
And if we're going to accept that one, I think we should open it up so other people.
Well, that's what, I think that's what Eric is saying, you know, since we received that one, Eric, his suggestion is that we advertise and open it up to all kinds, to anybody.
Yeah, my suggestion was not being aware that someone had applied, and we need to just, we've got to move, but if people are interested, open it up and see if any other people.
Yeah, we have thirty days from the thirtieth to get it done. What I'd like to do, if, oh, I'm sorry, anybody else, Monica, Rob, anybody have opinions on this? Danny, you sounded okay with opening it up.
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with opening it up, I do know of someone that's interested in it. It's not the person I emailed, so I, because I told her that I wasn't sure yet, you know, that it wasn't even going to be open until the end of June, so then I would just get back to her, but anyway, my point is, like, yeah, if we're going to open it up, I do know someone that's also interested, so, yeah, that's it.
And I'll reach out to some folks to see if they're interested, if they can apply.
Okay, I don't know how we advertise that, but.
We'll advertise it again in the newspaper.
Okay, okay, and maybe put something on the website, maybe, okay, good, all right, okay, so we'll jump on that right away, so that, because July, summer vacations, da-da-da. It could be, it could take longer than we meant.
We do it right now, yeah.
We meet in July.
Yes.
Matt, could you just walk me through the timeline on that?
Timeline of what?
The advertising for commercials.
There's no rules.
Well, I thought it was thirty days or something.
Well, you have thirty days beyond the vacancy to fill the vacancy. So you have to July thirtieth, fill the day.
Okay.
So you can advertise next week, I don't know, I assume your meeting is scheduled for the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, the legislative meeting?
Yeah, yeah, no, so, you know, add the applications in by mid-July.
So they have time, so remember, we got jammed up with the last one, because we didn't have time to interview.
Yeah, we actually had to have a special meeting. So.
There's no requirement on that duration, that's why I mean by no rules, I mean, put it out there.
One, one, one ad?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if we do one ad and allow, how long, maybe seven days maximum from the time we post the ad, because we have to have time to interview these people, so if we.
Just, yes, because I have to advertise the interview meeting.
That's correct, that's going to be a public meeting.
We've got to do two things, we have to advertise that there's an opening, and then advertise the. Oh, we got to do two things. We have to advertise that there's an opening and then advertise the interviews.
Those are, those are open?
Yeah, they are.
But people just don't show up because.
Correct.
Okay, so that was like, nobody else is going to call that either.
I know, but they, but they, people could come.
Okay.
We could probably do that at the next planning meeting. We could do interviews too, probably.
We could meet early, it would be public, but depending on the agenda, we could, yeah, we could do the interviews from six to seven or something like that, I guess, since we're together anyway. And then the fall.
How many people we actually, how many applicants we have, you know, is it going to be two? Is it going to be four? You know, that's going to, you can't, let me give people 15 minutes, like, speed interview. So, I mean, I think we should just wait to see how many we get and then decide on when we would do the interviews. Because again, you don't want to make them feel, you know, rushed because we have to get on our meeting at seven. So the other thing is, I wanted to ask, where would we be advertising? Where do we advertise?
In the newspapers and we can put it on our website.
Okay, because so this would be something that can be shared on social media. We'll have a post or something.
Kelly Hannah will post it everywhere that she posts her other stuff.
Okay, thanks.
Question, I just am thinking of it because, I don't know, I guess we're school district. Can it be something, I know I see board requests on like nonprofit talent. Can we put it on nonprofit talent as well?
Once it's advertised, I mean, yeah, board members, you can share it any way you want.
Oh, no, no, no. Nonprofit talent is like a, like people go under to search for jobs and to search for like to join a board. So that's just a cert, a local search engine specifically because it is like Run Through Pittsburgh. I want to say Forbes, I'm saying.
Do you have a link to that or something?
Nonprofittalent.org.
Yeah, what it is.
In fact, I think the last time, it appeared on Indeed. Somebody shared it all, somehow it went viral, you know what I mean? It was all over. It was on, it was on.
No, it's like, how much you get paid for it? It was like nothing.
Yeah, right. It was on sites that I never even heard of before. So, yeah, it went viral, so, based on the newspaper. So, anyway, the deadline would be seven days after, like, if you can get this in on Thursday, it would be the following Thursday, all right, because we got to get, you know?
And then the board meeting would be the third Tuesday to interview.
Yeah, unless we have too many to do that.
Okay, let's see what we have.
Okay.
So then too, what we need to see, let's make sure people are available? Or is it just like, you got to come this day or you can't do it?
I don't know. It depends on how many people we have, but it might be, you got to come, you know, it depends on how close we're getting to the deadline. That's why I'd like for us to jump on this quickly. So these are all good ideas. Okay, so Rick can get that advertised. The third item I wanted to tell you, the PPS, you know, we have a group of people, board members who would meet with a couple of board members from Pittsburgh to start talking. They have not gotten back. There's nothing to report. They haven't gotten back to us on that. Let's see. Oh, there's, Kelly worked on a letter that we would send out. We've always wanted to do this. So there's a letter that would go out to residents to talk about the tax cut and it would talk about the good things that we, that we're not cutting the educational program in order to cut the taxes. So it's a good news kind of a thing and a flyer to talk about all the good stuff going on in the district. So that's, so Kelly's, Kelly's working on that.
Can I ask for whatever she's going to add into that to also touch on as well, like, our restructuring of the district? Because people still aren't aware of how we transition to primary and intermediate.
Really?
And I think that that's important to just, you know, repeat so folks are aware. Just as simple as when we talk about where we're sitting in Bellman, we say, oh, she's going to go to Kelly. And they're like, oh, why not Turner? And, you know, then I explain to them why. But I just think as we continue this conversation, it would be important to just continue to reiterate what we have done, even though it's been some years now, people think, they just don't know.
Right.
One, people don't read, but people just don't know. So the more we can just be consistent in sharing that information, I think is important because.
And what we're going to do with our board will explain that kind of too.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
I've done that for other things and our general area people absolutely don't know. They don't have a clue about it.
And that makes a difference in the structure, you know, when people are looking at our schools and they're always comparing our test score. They don't know that we now have a space and we're focusing on early childhood education. And then our intermediate schools are preparing our kids for middle school and what that looks like, what that means. I went to a intermediate school, but other people who go to just elementary, then middle school, they don't, they don't even know what that means.
Yeah, right.
So I think that's something we can really, you know, inform.
Yep, yep, okay. Okay, thanks, Ashley. And then something else we've always wanted to do was to put in two pie charts. And so on the flip side of this, I don't see why we couldn't have a pie chart that shows where our revenue comes from. We've always talked about doing this and where our revenue goes. What I mean, what, how do we spend the money and where does the money come from? Two of the simple pie charts on the back of that same sheet, I think would be helpful, so.
I have them already, so it'd be easy to insert.
Yeah, it'd be easier to plug those in. All right, thanks, everybody. Let's see, okay, my fifth item here was to thank Rob again, but I hope we already did that. And I believe it or not, if you look in our policy, it used to say that we, the board doesn't meet in July. Can you believe that? That they actually got away with having a whole month when we didn't meet? That's.
I remember that. That's why I asked if we met, but next month.
Yeah, 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 we do. So, okay, that's it for me on report items unless people have questions about anything. All right. That's it. So could I? Oh, who's absent? Oh, Vanessa. Oh, Michael and Vanessa are absent. They, nobody, did anybody?
Vanessa did say it was not.
Okay, Vanessa said she wasn't able to attend, but Michael didn't, but maybe he doesn't. Yeah, he probably doesn't know that he has to do that. So I, so I don't know what, board action is, do I, does this have to be a motion? Board action is requested to excuse Vanessa Bufree and Michael Rose from attending tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Right, there's no voting window on this thing, so all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion passes, they are excused. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Need a second? Second, all in favor, of course. Oh, is there a voting window for this?
Unanimously.
Okay, yeah, that's unanimous. Okay, great. All right, okay, thanks, everybody. So there is now, if you click, there will be a short executive session with Matt and everybody else is excused. Oh, yeah, I got to sign something. Yeah, what is this?